All right. Call the meeting to order a call to Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay. All right, and I do believe there is a one change to the agenda. Is that correct, Greg, just adding Eden Avenue?
Yes, we have a zoning violation or somebody mowing their lawn. The letter was sent, unfortunately, I didn't realize that it had to come from the select board, but a letter was sent to an individual in town. And it's the 30 days is up, so we need to make a decision on how to move forward on 33 Eden Street or Avenue, I guess it is.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the agenda with that additional change?
Did you want to change the car in the creek as well?
Oh, okay, yeah. Because David Carmen's on the phone, rather than have him wait to the very end to discuss the car in the creek removal, I was going to move it to after good stuff and before Highway Department. So put those two changes, our motion to approve the agenda with those two changes.
No move.
Second?
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Did someone ask something or no?
Yeah, I didn't know if you could hear me or not. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm actually working overtime up at the airport, so I actually. Do you know when that would be exactly?
We're just going to go through the minutes, any other open public comment, guests, and then good stuff, and then you.
10 or 15 minutes.
Yeah, it won't be long.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 24?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Okay, any other open public comment?
This is Dave again, actually had a comment apart from the car in the river.
Okay.
And had to do with, I was actually going over some of the Zoom meetings that happened over the last couple of months. And I noticed that there was one in August having to do with somebody that was burning in their front, in the front of their property. Are you familiar with that?
In their driveway?
Yep, that was me, and I like to kind of explain that if you don't mind. My, actually, my basement had flooded, and I had a bunch of boxes and paper that were basically destroyed, and I tried to recycle as much as I possibly could. The only, the only things that were burned were just paper and paper products, basically. So I just want to kind of get that straight. It was nothing, no styrofoam, no plastic. And I actually found out about it by watching the Zoom meeting. I assume it's me, because I did it over a couple of days, a couple hours each day. And I just wanted to let it be known that I am aware, you don't have to send me a letter, because it was only for that, that was a couple of days where I did have the problem with those boxes that were, I had to get rid of. So that was the, kind of the extent of it, and that was it.
Okay, thank you for letting us know that.
Yeah, yeah, I felt kind of embarrassed by it, because I was learning about it through the Zoom meeting, but, you know, I just wanted to, you know, make those comments and let it be known that it won't happen again.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Dave, did you want to contact the fire warden?
What's that, for doing that?
Yes.
I had not, I didn't know that was required, because it was in a metal fire pit. And is that something that, is that something that is required if I was to? I mean, because, you know, I do, I do actually occasionally burn, you know, paper and paper products, you know, along with wood in my backyard and the fireplace, too. Is that, is that necessary?
No, not if it's in a pit.
Okay.
Tom, do you disagree?
I think the fire warden, you know, should be notified of any burning.
He's not notified when people have a fire in their pits out back. He doesn't have to be, and he'll tell you that.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other guests? No?
No, nobody waiting, no.
Okay, all right, good stuff. We have Stan's thank you letter. Everybody got a copy of that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Also, on top of that, I just want to mention September 26th, I think I mentioned it last meeting for Our Yard for the Fall Festival. What we're doing this year is Our Yard is taking on full responsibility of everything, and we are starting it around 5:00 PM down at the Little League Field. We're going to have hot dogs, chips, water, and cookies for everybody for free. And we are going to have games for the kids. Omia is donating pumpkins for decorating, and we are going to have fireworks at dusk.
Awesome.
So.
Do you need anything from me to help out with that? Or you want that on the website or anything like that? Are you going to?
Yeah, once we, we've been trying to meet, and once we create something that's kind of a flyer, I can send it to you, and we can definitely put it up on the website, and then all the Procter pages, too.
Okay, perfect.
So hopefully, you know, we're kind of focusing on the Procter community, just to get Procter people out and give them something to do, so.
Great.
Anything else anybody has?
I just have to give a quick shout out to all the kids at Procter Elementary School, Procter High School. Reopening has gone very, very well, and they have done an amazing job with our new rules and our new procedures in our, in our new COVID world. So I just have been really proud of them, and I just need to publicly acknowledge that.
That's great, that's good. All right, now we'll go to you, David, over to the car in the creek removal.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so basically, I've kind of taken upon myself to do a little bit of legwork to get this moving along a little bit. And mainly on, to get the state to help us out, to get this to happen. Contacted Governor Scott's office, they actually contacted me about that, about it, and they actually had A&R get in contact with me as well. And so I've been in contact with a gentleman, this is actually after I had talked with Greg about a couple quotes that I got for removal of the car. But A&R, they were actually, they called me today, and the gentleman's name is Patrick from A&R, he's from the Enforcement Division. And he says that he was in contact with two people, engineers from Green Mountain Power, that is looking into it a little bit further to see how that could be pulled out. And they don't think, at this point, they don't think it could be pulled out with a wrecker. There's a little bit of a conflicting opinion on that. So they're going to, Green Mountain Power is actually going to look at it with a couple of their engineers to see what could be done, or if it could be done with a wrecker. So that's kind of where it's at now. I just got the information this afternoon about that. So as far as a wrecker, though, I actually did contact place up in Milton, which is up near the airport up here in Burlington, you know, Paston. They were going to charge about $1,500, $2,000 to take it out, or they would offer to do it for that amount. And then we had, I had Boondock just ask them how much it might be, and they originally said it'd be $500 to take it out. And they would actually pay for the disposal of the car, you know, impounding it for 30 days as required. And so I don't know if that's something that could be. You know, I guess the question is, is to who actually is responsible for that car? Is it the state, is it the town? Is it A&R, is it Green Mountain Power? Does anybody know if anything? I don't know what transpired prior to now, because the only thing I could find in the meeting minutes was from way back in February about this. So I don't know what else has been done.
Well, we did take action by sending the governor a letter and addressing it and asking him what he's going to do about it. I believe the majority of us, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we felt it's the state's responsibility, it's not the town's responsibility.
Can I, can I just intervene here? I have a message from somebody from A&R that I'd like to play, if that is okay?
Sure.
And I received it last week sometime, hang on.
Sorry, this is David Carmen, just wanted to let you know that A&R, A.C. Natural Resources, your source was the asking. There you go. So the A.C. Natural Resources contacted me.
This might be David.
Yeah, this is me, this is me, basically explaining this.
They're going to try to nudge this along with the car and the waterfall. But you know, you can call back with more information, when they have more of a plan of what they're going to do, but it looks like they may actually take care.
So I got that one, and then I got another one, but I might have deleted it by mistake today. Because I got a whole bunch of calls today randomly that were for somebody else. They did, somebody from A&R did call me, and they did say that they were going to, the state was going to do it, and he did say that he was in touch with, I want to say the person in Rutland's name is Chris. For some reason that sticks in my mind. But they did call me last week, and I think I accidentally erased that.
Okay.
If any of you get calls from them, is there, can you just ask them to forward it on to me or call me at the office or whatever, so that I'm kind of in a loop on this?
Absolutely, I didn't talk to him, he just left a message.
Right, right.
Greg, actually, it was Patrick Lokes, I think his name is, from A&R. So.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to jot that down, but he is the, he is the second in command for enforcement at A&R for environmental enforcement. And he gave me the name of two people at Green Mountain Power, Gino, Gino Alestra.
Okay.
And John Greenan, G-R-E-E-N-A-N.
John Greenan, okay.
Yep, and they were, yeah, they were the people that he's talking with, Green Mountain Power. They're, he's supposed to get back to, they're supposed to get back to him by Wednesday. If not, he's going to follow up and contact them. There's actually, I guess there's, he said there's two pen stocks that they're concerned about, I guess, were location of where the car is and pulling it out.
Right.
And, but I guess they're going to confer with other engineers about what possibly could be done. So it's a kind of a combination, Green Mountain Power and A&R at this point. So, so I don't know if, you know, I could just pass everything, everything along to you, you kind of pick up, pick up where this is left off and go from there. My concern was, I just wanted to kind of see this kind of pressed forward while the water was still low, and, because now might, might be a good opportunity to get it out of there.
Right.
Because once, once it comes back up again, we're kind of stuck in the same position that we were back in, you know, last winter, where you can't get to it, so.
Okay, well, I've got those names and things, so yeah, if you have any emails or anything, shoot them on over to me.
Okay, yeah, actually, it's all verbal. But what I can do is I can pass along, if, if Patrick gets back in contact with me, what I can do is I can give you, him your number, and you guys can connect and just, you know, take it from there.
Perfect, perfect, at least that way I can keep the select board in the loop a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, and it seems to be that this is kind of moving away from the select board and becoming more of a state, Green Mountain Power issue, so.
Right, right, okay, fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
All right, anybody have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, I know what their concern is, is those two pen stocks and, and the fence will, would have to come down that they have back at the Marble Museum. So I'm sure that's their concern of, of those two huge pen stocks that are running from the dam down to the Turban Building.
Greg, I'll send you an email with the phone number that I was called from. That might help.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay, thank you, David.
Okay, no problem, I just wanted to help out however way I could, and hopefully nudge it along a little bit, so.
Right, but thank you.
Appreciate it, David, thank you.
All right, I'm going to sign off, thanks very much, and have a great night.
Thank you.
You, too.
Okay, Highway Department. Operations report.
So the operations report is in your packet, just some highlights. I know, sure you've seen that we've been, the guy's been doing a lot of crosswalk painting lately. I think we're pretty well done, tried to get that all done before school started. I don't, I don't know if they got it all done, but they got the majority of it done before school started. We've been moving some material in, kind of getting ready for the winter time as far as stockpiles of materials, so I think we're all, all ready to go there. Got the fire hydrant is all done at the top of High Street. That was a hydrant that was not meeting flows, so we actually took it out and put in a blow-off assembly there. So that's all cleaned up and reseated and good to go. Other than that, it's just kind of been getting things ready to go, doing mowing. If you see the sidewalk on Main Street, they did a good job of watering that, so that's all grown back and it's all stabilized, so it's looking real good. Yeah, we just kind of getting ready for the winter time now. Waiting for the state to put their state bid quotes out, so that we can see what the costs are for the salt. We typically pick up the state's bid on that and usually get the same deal that they get. That's not out yet, but I'm hoping to see that really soon, so that we can start getting the salt sort of ordered and ready to go. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You guys have any questions? Okay, all good? Okay, we have 2021 paving bid. Open those first. We got three of them. Okay. First one is from Fuller Sand and Gravel. And the total bid on this is $53,660.
Okay.
The second one is from Pike. Need to invest in a letter opener, I guess? Or sharpen my knives, one or the other, I don't know which it is. So this one is from Pike Industries, and the total bid for this one is $64,672.
Okay.
And these are broken up, just so you know, by like cold plane and concrete pavement and traffic control, so I don't know if you want those individually broken up by each.
Yeah, there was a, there was a bid form sent out with this, and they should have filled in the blanks on the bid.
Because that's where you, you might see the variance more so.
I definitely, am I going to get these all back, I assume, right? Yeah, when I do the bid tabs, I'll do all that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay. And the last one is from Wilk Paving. Trying not to stab myself, so I don't end up in that. Okay, their total was
Okay.
And I'll just return those all to you tomorrow morning.
Perfect, thank you. And so I assume the way you guys have done this in the past is I'll put together the bid tabs. We have a winner, winning bid, and I'll bring the contract back to you to approve. Is that how you typically do it?
Yeah.
Well, it depends on how, sometime when they're broken out, if we know what it is in front of us, then we sometime make a motion to approve one then. But is everyone okay with him calculating out the three different categories and that we have a better?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll bring to you a recommendation based off of apples to apples, long as it's apples to apples comparison, and give you a recommendation and a contract to work.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
The next are heating fuel bids, there's two of them. I assume one is the diesel and the other is heating oil.
Yeah, so if you could try to do maybe just the number two oil first and then the fuel.
Okay, I think, I'm not sure, but I think one of them, combine them.
Okay.
The same envelopes, I only have one envelope from them, unless they didn't give us one, so I'll check this one first, just to see if they gave us both. Okay, let's see, heating oil. So it looks like Getcha maybe only gave us heating oil.
Okay.
Okay, so there's the first one, and the they gave us option one with a fixed price for 1,650 gallons at 51.61 a gallon.
Okay.
Option two was 19, they have 19 cents and then parentheses, 25 cents over Rutland Rack daily pricing capped at $1.71 a gallon.
Okay.
Can you repeat who's the firm I didn't hear?
Sure, Getcha Fuels.
Okay, okay.
Charlotte Firestone is coming in to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Let's finish these two things up.
Okay, okay, so they gave you over, just a, how much over rack was it?
Yeah, over rack.
19?
25.
19 cents, but then they have 25 cents in parentheses, and it's capped at $1.71. But then they gave me a second sheet that says fixed price is $1.61 a gallon.
Okay.
So that's what I'm wondering, if this. No, it must be all heating.
Well, they're probably doing a fixed price, and if we don't meet that, get to that point, we're still paying it.
Right, and then the rack plus price is $1.58 a gallon.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Too much paper. All right, and this one's diesel.
So Getcha only did fuel oil?
Yes.
I'm sorry, number two, okay.
This one is from Champlain Valley, and this is for heating oil, and it's cap price at $1.65 per gallon.
Okay.
And it says rack plus price is not applicable.
Right.
The rack price is 1.386.
Okay. Okay, so they're giving us a fixed cost as well, a fixed price.
Yeah.
Does it say how many gallons, do we have a gallon for Champlain Valley?
No, they didn't. Didn't give anything. Or the form they filled out doesn't reference that either.
Right, and it was never meant to be, yeah, it was a per gallon cost typically.
Right.
And how many gallons did we use last year?
Oh geez, probably close to that 1,800 that they're quoting. I don't have that in front of me, but.
That's my, that's my guess.
Yeah, that, because it was, it did say in the bid documents on the invitation to bidders how much we had used in the previous year.
Okay.
Or I'm sure that's where they're referencing that number.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one is Irving. And their fixed price was $1.61 a gallon. The rack plus price is $1.4934.
Okay.
And they sent a whole letter explaining fixed heating costs, and it kind of goes into, too. So, but the form they filled out was just that.
Did they put in there any, they, okay, so their rack cost, was there anything above rack cost on their bid for Irving?
No, they just said rack plus was 1.4934. And then rack, they just put Opus Albany, they didn't put any figure in there. I'm looking through their letter to see if they explained anything.
No, but they're charging us about, our wood, if we pick them. It's weird, because there's this like 12 cents over rack.
You mean, would they do the 1.4934?
Yeah, but that's not, that can't be entirely true, because Getcha's saying that rack, they're 25 cents over rack, and they gave us a 1.61 per gallon fixed for 1,600 gallons.
Right, they both gave us 1.61, well, yeah, 1.61 per gallon fixed.
Well, one of them was Rutland Rack and the other one was Albany, right?
One is Valerio.
Rutland?
Valerio Rack.
They're both going to come from the Rutland's location. There's only certain places, I only know this because this is what I do. There's only certain, everybody gets their stuff from the same place, basically, in this area. It's just how much do they pay for it from the rack?
Right.
And then how much they charge you above the rack, which currently the price is right around the $1.49 a gallon for what they pay currently. So the fixed price for the 1,600 gallons from Getcha is a pretty good deal, especially if we've used that 1,600 gallons in the past.
But if their rack plus price is higher than Irving.
It does, it, it's not.
It is.
Well, it doesn't matter, because we're buying 1,600 gallons at a fixed rate.
Right, but we get the fixed rate, plus we get a rack plus price, just to compare them.
I would be a little hesitant to think that we're going to use 1,600 gallons this year, simply because we're going to get into the building a little bit later this year, plus we've got that heat pump thing down there. And Tom, is that heat pump going to save us on heating oil? Will that thing create any additional heat?
Yes, it will save us some money, yes.
So there might, so that would be the only thing I would just want to put my two cents in as far as saying we're going to make, you know, that we're going to actually use 1,800 gallons. We may see a savings because of those improvements to the building over there.
You should see that.
Yeah.
So we probably won't use 1,600, but I, like, we need to know how many gallons we did use last year.
Give me, if you give me two seconds, I can get that number. Be right back.
Did Irving in there give us, if it's fixed for Irving, did they give us the number of gallons?
Now, I was looking through the letter to see if they put it in there, but I don't see.
Okay.
So between the rink.
They put 1,652, so that's what they both use, 1,650.
So they're, they're fixing us at Irving, too, that we're going to, we're going to use 1,652.
Yeah, between the, that's what it was, that's what it was on the document, between the rink and the building across the street.
Yeah. Okay.
So we might want to go. You might want to talk to them, because we're not going to use 1,600, I don't think, if we're using a heat pump. What do you think, Tom? It's usually a 20% drop at least, penny.
Well, we don't know what the winter's going to be like either, so.
Forecasting a hard winter.
Forecasting a hard winter, you know?
Yes.
And the rink now has heat pumps.
It does, yes.
So we're not going to use as much at the rink either. So to, to get the fixed rate and to buy that many gallons, I think we're tying into something that we don't kind of want to. Maybe we should have added that when we put it out to bid, that we now have heat pumps.
Well, I think the rink had heat pumps last year.
I don't remember. I thought the rink.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, the rink only, the rink only used three hundred and fifty gallons last year.
Oh, so that's, you know.
Well, we, we don't have to use that amount of oil, do we?
Well. Judy, does it say if that, since it's a fixed cost and they say it's up to eighteen hundred, or do they say that it's eighteen hundred or?
Well, like, like Champlain doesn't say anything. They just filled the form out. They just put, you know, capped price, a dollar sixty-five a gallon, no rack plus price. And then the rack was one point three eight six.
And then what is, what does Getcha, what do they put for their fixed? Does it say fixed up to that much?
Fixed one point six one.
Up, up to?
But they're saying you're buying sixteen hundred, you're committing to sixteen hundred gallons.
Right.
And Irving is saying you're committing to sixteen fifty-two. And they're saying that so you can get that price.
Well, I guess what we do is just pick the lowest one, go back to them and say if we order only fifteen hundred, but why, why wouldn't we order probably as much as we did last year, just to be on safe side? If it's left over, it's left over and we're getting out of it. Better rate.
No, I understand though. If you don't use the sixteen hundred gallons, you pay for the sixteen hundred gallons, period. You're locked into sixteen hundred gallons to get that price. So you're going to pay this for the sixteen hundred gallons. Because you committed to using it.
Right, but say, what if we use thirteen hundred and they delivered it all and we ended up with sixteen hundred, we just don't use it?
But you have to pay for it.
Right, I get it, but we're also going to pay at a lower price than we would if we.
So if you don't use three hundred gallons, you have to pay for the three hundred gallons. The only way, and you have to do that before you can switch to an, like, next year, say, um, somebody else came and their bid was lower, you still have to use the three hundred gallons from them before you can switch to another company.
Right.
Generally, speaking.
We, we need some more information here. You know, a few years ago, when every homeowners were buying, you know, the fixed price, you weren't locked into any total amount.
Right.
It's because you're a smaller user. So they can give you that, but your fixed price is going to be a little higher. Homeowners usually don't get the same because they're smaller users.
I understand that.
Does the Getcha, does it say that, that there's, that we have to purchase the full sixteen hundred gallons?
Uh, let me see, Getcha.
I, I would call Mike at Getcha. That's who I'm buying from here, and I've already had this conversation with them. If you decide to go with him, he's very easy to work with.
Yeah, they are.
That's, that's my point, and we have to have a conversation about, about it.
So Irving, Irving said more. They said that the fixed rate is only for sixteen fifty gallons, okay? Up heating oil as requested. If the gallons are consumed before the end of the contract, pricing would revert to a variable rate that will fluctuate. So they talk about if we use it all and we have to go above sixteen fifty.
Right, but not the other way.
Right.
Well, you can put a bid sheet out on it, can't you, Greg?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it and.
Yeah, you can look at them and like analyze them and I could come up with some answer that's kind of, so we don't have to go back out to bid, because I, like I said, it's not, like, they're all, all of these guys, I think, are pretty reasonable.
Yep.
I think they're all, they're all in the game. I kind of lean towards Getcha because we've been using Getcha. And I think they've been very good to us and their pricing is comparable to Irving.
We didn't use Getcha last year, did we?
Champlain Valley.
Champlain Valley.
But we used Getcha the year before, right?
No, we used Keys in here before.
So I'll let you.
Been with Champlain Valley for about five or six years.
Okay, and we did, I think we did diesel with them too last year. I'm not, okay. All right, so I'll let you read through this because
Okay.
Because they gave you quite a bit of information. Irving did. Okay?
Did you have diesel bids?
I do. Hopefully they're easier to understand than the oil one.
Yes.
Good luck.
All right. First one is. All right, this is through Irving. Um, there is no bid for fixed price. Rack plus price is one point five seven one three.
Okay.
And it says that the variable price for diesel fluctuates weekly. Why, why they didn't do it fixed?
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Fluctuates, but diesel has a bigger flux than.
This one is Champlain Valley. And theirs is rack plus price is what the heck? It looks like they put plus twelve cents.
Rack plus twelve cents?
Yeah, per gallon. And then the rack price is one point three nine three.
Huh.
Heard.
One fifty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Those are the only two?
Yep.
Okay.
Includes our bid opening for oil. Okay, is there any other new or old business under highway? No? Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Omo.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we get to open Contract Seven East Side Tank Demolition Bids. We have a lot of them.
Oh goodness.
So, let's see. So this is for the, what is it, a hundred thousand gallon fuel water at the reservoir on Tower Road?
Contract number seven.
All right, here we go.
So just a reminder, this is a con, this is some bids that we opened, these aren't them, but we did this same exercise in the summertime and we thought maybe we'd come back whenever there was a little cooler temperatures, maybe a little safer to do, maybe a little better prices as well.
Right. All right. So the first one is from the Belden Company. Seventeen thousand four hundred ninety dollars.
Okay.
These are easier to read. This one is from Tommy Grace. Twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
This is from, what was that one, wait?
Might have Tommy Grace and son. Might have two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's odd.
Yeah, this is the and son, probably.
Right, it's more expensive when he includes his son, maybe. So the first one was To, it just says Thomas Grace and this one says TW Grace Inc.
Okay.
So this one is forty-six thousand five hundred.
Okay.
It has a question on it. Are you sure the work has to be completed by November thirty-first? And I think that's because there is no thirty-first in November. My guess.
That is true.
I'm going to buy a calendar tomorrow.
If you find one with thirty-one days in November, let me know.
I will scratch one in with thirty-one days.
Greg, there's a trick to teach you with your numbers.
Thirty.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm from Oklahoma, so I have an Oklahoma education. Bear with me, would you?
Maybe they have thirty-one days there, just like they have.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
As long as that thirty-one days gives me an extra paycheck that month, I'm cool with it.
Now, the calendar said thirty days.
We don't want to add days to this year, sorry.
That's right, we want to get this year.
Okay, the next one is Casella Construction. Seventeen thousand eight hundred. And one more. Now I know, Bruce, why you struggled with these things.
Judy, I'm sending you one next week.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a big one.
All right, this one is from Costello. Dismantling. And theirs is eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty.
Damn, that's all of them?
That's it.
All right.
Oh, looks like Belden.
Yeah, Belden is, I mean, we know their reputable and we know their history, so.
Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to approve the Belden bid? At seventeen thousand four hundred ninety.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
That's all of the bid opening stuff.
It is, thankfully. Got through them.
A year's worth in one night.
Thank you. All right, Simon's Operation Report.
Yeah, so the, the report is in your package. Again, this is sort of what we've done in the past. I'm not going to read through it, but if, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can. If not, I can definitely get some clarification from, from the boys down at Simon's.
Anybody have any?
I don't know if you saw the first two pages, actually the first page of the report. But he, Chris put in a page of contract renewal notes because he knew that we were talking about their contract tonight. So I want to make sure everybody had a chance to read this. It basically talks about their operations and how it works and that they're offering a, a a decrease if we do a three-year or even a cheaper rate if we do a five-year contract with them. So I just wanted to show you this. It's something that is not normally in there, but it's specific just to the contracts negotiations or the contract discussion tonight.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on it?
No.
All right. Anything else underwater? All right, is there a motion to go out of the water and into sewage, Commissioner?
Omo.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So again, the Simon's report, we have.
Yes.
Okay. All right, nothing to add from anybody under this one?
Uh, just, I found out on Friday afternoon, I was called out to the lagoons and we've got a fairly sizable tear that we're going to have to take care of.
Okay.
Right along one of the seams in the middle of the lagoon and it's who, I don't know how long it is. It's low water level, so it's a big one. And we think the turtles have gotten in there and they have basically dug it in or something and so it's created a void underneath and that's what caused the rip is it, they buried out, they basically dug the dirt out from underneath the slope and there's a hole there now. And then it gets weight on it from whatever and, so anyway, that's something that we're, I'm working with, with Simons to to get them to fix that up. There's a little bit of, well, I'll let you know, but initially I kind of got a little bit of hesitation, like that's not, you know, in our scope of work, but
Yeah.
I'll let you know where that goes. Because to me, that's, it's part of the maintenance of the, of the lagoon system, so. We'll, we'll see.
All right. Sludge removal cost estimate.
Yep, so at the last meeting, we had talked a little bit about what it's going to take to repair the liners in the lagoons and I, I still very confident that the fixes that we did are probably going to buy us five to ten years, but this is definitely a capital purchase that we're going to have to do. So I reached out to Wayne Elliott with Aldridge and Elliott and he basically gave me these kind of rough numbers that he thought about two hundred thousand dollars for the sludge removal piece of it. Uh, and then the replacement, we got the, the liners, he's thinking four hundred to five, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, we're easily at three quarters of a million dollars here to do this total project. So it's just something to think about. We'll have to bond it, I'm sure. We'll have to bond the majority of it. But in the meantime, what he, what he did recommend is that we go ahead and start working on the sludge removal at this point. Uh, it's nice because we can run those lagoons one at a time so we can draw the other one down and clean one at a time, uh, which is ideal, of course. So it may be something we need to talk about in the near future, at least getting the sludge removal part started. Uh, so that we're not taking really such a big hit when we look at just doing the liners, because we'll have to basically take the sludge out, rip the liner out and then fix the slopes and put rock and sand and all that behind uh, and then install new liners. So about a half a million dollars there.
That's not good.
Well, you know, those things are, are holding up great though. I mean, they're already past their useful life and they're still holding up. Uh, but like everything else, it's, it's, it's going to have to happen, so we need to start planning for it now.
Yep.
All right. Anything else under sewage commissioners? No? Is there a motion to move out of sewage and back to the normal meeting?
Omo.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to let Charlotte come in? If she.
I think she's already in.
Yeah, but I mean to, in the.
Charlotte, did you have anything to share?
She's on mute, but.
Right.
Can't hear you.
She has a chat.
She says no thanks. Okay, she's out in the kitchen cooking, so she's making us dinner.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay, standing committee reports. You have the BLSG minutes attached to your packet? Everybody want to speak to that or?
No.
Bruce, this is just the first part of it. The second part just came in today, so I'll put it in the next packet.
Yeah, yeah, I just saw it just now. There was a thing from Jay, so. No.
So the Solidways District did me, I would like to look at when our HHW pickup is in October and I would like to run a second green up day. A lot of towns are doing that because of the COVID and how it got moved. I did ask John what he thought of that and he thought it would be fine. So I just want to know if everybody else thinks it's all right.
I'm fine with it. Anybody else?
Sure.
Well, what do we, what do we estimate we might have for cost?
The cost would most likely just be the highway department's time. And then the possibility, I have to talk to Mark and see if other towns, if he, usually there's no cost associated with green up day. So I have to ask him if he's going to hold to that if other, if we do a second green up day. So I have to talk to him about that. But if there was any cost, I would definitely tell you that, hey, it's a significant cost if what do you think? I don't foresee a big cost other than the town throwing the stuff in their vehicle and then taking it.
So you're not talking about anything at the transfer state? So you're not talking about anything at the transfer station, no?
No, I'm just talking green up day. I have bags already left over and just the same thing. Leave them beside the road, the town crew just picks them up and then, then it's taking them to the transfer station. So I just have to make sure with Mark that there, there's going to be no charge for that.
All right, so just keep us updated as to, okay. All right. Uh, anybody else for their committee meetings? Greg, did you go, you went to the Beaver Pond, oh, not Beaver Pond, sorry, the rink pool one?
I did, yes.
And that was just to kind of get ready for the winter, correct, and to go over a couple of items of using the rink?
Right, exactly. Really it was about how we were going, or how they were going to control, um, people in and out with the COVID and how that, that was going to look. I think they're still trying to work on it, but it sounds like they're going to have to have monitors at the doors. And, uh, parents are not going to be able to hang out inside anymore. Um, they're going to have to hang in their cars or go home or something because the kids and the, the users are the ones that are going to have to have, um, access to the, the building.
Right.
Not the parents.
Was there more discussion? Because I know originally it was talked about, um, you know, how we open it to the public um, in other communities as well. And I, I know because of the funding sometime there's restrictions, but I think considering with COVID that, you know, not so much the community, I think we're fine around here, but I'm more concerned with, you know, out of state.
Right, there, and, and there was some talk about, you know, trying to figure out where people were coming from because there are some, some states and some areas that are considered clean, I guess, for lack of a better term. Uh, where people are allowed to come in and, and not give their two weeks. But, uh, I don't know if they've really gotten that far with it yet and how that, how that's going to look. Um, we did talk about, should we do just, you know, Proctor citizens? And they thought that because this rink gets so much widespread use, that that maybe wasn't going to be, you know, wasn't going to work. But I think that's kind of to be determined at this point. We'll, we'll kind of move forward how they want to do that and.
Right.
A matter of how's it going to look and how you're going to regulate it.
All right.
And then there, uh, just some news today that they don't, I, I sent today, we finally got the go-ahead to meet with the, uh, with People's Bank on the Morburg Proctor grant that they submitted. Um, so that'll be happening, I think it's in two weeks, I, I think, maybe it's next week. Uh, but it's all via Zoom, so they will be doing their presentation in front of the bankers and, uh, hopefully getting the grant for their.
Okay, all right.
So this is in addition to the other two sessions of, of the Proctor Fund?
Right, so this one was rink specific. The other one we did before was for the pool.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, this one's just for, oh, they've got some, I don't even remember what all it was, but it was some upgrades, more upgrades and things to the building, I believe. And we did talk about, we did talk about also how to make that thing, um, that rink more of a year-round sort of a venue. Uh, and how to regulate people coming on it, or should they be let it regulated, you know, coming on the ice or whatever? That was another discussion that we had, whether or not, uh, you know, after they go through all the work of putting that ice down, should we just let everybody out there and let it be a public thing, or should it be regulated sort of like the pool? Um, so there was that discussion and then there was a discussion of, I, or maybe brainstorming session of how to, to bring, um, some events and some things sort of year-round out there as a year-round venue. So I, I'll put the minutes together and I'll put them in the next, the next packet for you.
Okay. All right, anything on Beaver Pond or any of the other committees?
No.
Okay, um, the bills. You've got a copy of all the invoices that we've gotten. There's one that I was going to ask you about. What the heck was it? What is, um, maybe you've had this before and I just didn't, Green Maple?
Green Maple is part of our, um, solar that we pay.
Yes. The two out on the West Proctor Road.
Right, right.
So we get power from them and we pay them?
Yeah, and then I think there's a balance later on that they pay. Uh, I don't know exactly how that totally works. Uh, Stan tried to explain part of it to me and I, I, I didn't get all of it. But, uh, I know it is, that is definitely a solar-related, uh, bill. I don't even see it, Green Maple. Oh, there it is, yeah, yeah.
Is that like quarterly? Is that monthly? I don't remember seeing it on there.
Oh yeah, it's been there. I'd have to look. I don't know if it's, if it's, it's not monthly.
Right.
It's either quarterly or it's twice a year.
All right.
I want to say it's quarter, I want to say it's quarterly though.
All right.
But I could look into it and see what it feeds and, and what it's all about.
Right.
Yeah, I need to do that anyway, so I'll look into it.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Want me to stop in the morning and sign those?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be here about quarter till eight.
Okay, perfect.
Can, can you just say what the total is, please?
Of the Green Maple?
No.
Oh, the total, I'm sorry. Scrolling down.
It is 175,473.86.
Thank you.
All right, um, Town Office, the change order number three, invoice number four.
Right, so first thing you have is change order number three. Uh, this is a couple of the things that we really, one is an electric panel replacement. So when they were in there, they were required to, to work on electric panel and move it. And originally the bid was to put the, the old panel that was in there that was very old, put it back in there. And we decided that now is the time to upgrade to, you know, newer and better and, uh, it's easier to, to work on and it's easier to, to kind of troubleshoot. Uh, so that's what the change proposal number 11 is. And then number 12 is an unavoidable change proposal. Um, in the elevator shaft, there's a requirement that, well, on the edge of the shaft, from the edge of the shaft to the edge of the, the lift, there's a space and the space was too wide based on, um, building code. So, because they're afraid somebody, I guess, would fall down the space or something. So what they had to do was basically build a partition wall up that, 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 uh, elevator shaft. And that's what you see here, is basically a hollow, non-insulated wall that reduces that void space so that it meets the code. So those are the two changes that we have on this change order number three. And with that, that brings, uh, the next pay. The next invoice, which is number four, that is included in this invoice as well, that change order number three.
So can I ask where we are in the budgeted money for this? Where do we?
You cannot ask that question.
Because I'm just a little bit.
Well, I will tell you that everything that they have done has, and Tom has been in this as well, he's been there. Everything that they have done has been, in my opinion, has been something that needed to happen. What happened?
I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
My issue is the amount of money we spent on engineers.
Right.
Is on this, and now these things are happening. That's, that's my issue.
Right. But, and again, I think the things that are happening were, except for the, the, the shaft thing, which to me is something they probably should have caught, the other stuff was stuff that was, other stuff was hidden stuff. Like, you know, we take a ceiling down and there's, there's ceiling joists that are rotted away. There was no way to tell that that was going to happen. So the majority of these things were things, you know, you're, you're opening a, uh, you know, 150-year-old pan and things are not going to look right inside. Things are going to be a little odd, so.
Right.
I, I understand that, I just know that we're tight on.
Yeah, yeah.
And that now this is almost, this is like 2,000 more dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Which I feel that both of those things should have been in the original. Like, I don't know why they wouldn't have put the electrical panel in there. That doesn't make sense.
Well, they, they did, but to save money, they put it, they, they basically put, to put the old panel, to reset the old panel. That was a cost-saving bill. So what we decided was now is the time to do it right. Because now is, you know, if you put bad back into bad, it's going to be bad. So we want to upgrade things and make them right, and so there's some additional costs. But if we can, I've been looking at the numbers over the last few days and I, if we can really be pretty tight on, on getting back into that building whenever we're relocating over there, I think we're going to be pretty good. I think we're going to be close. We're going to be close. Uh, we're not going to be under budget, but I think we're going to be close.
So can, for the next meeting, can you give us some numbers? I just want to see how close we are to that budget.
Sure.
That would be great.
Oh yeah, sure.
I do kind of have to tend to agree with Carrie in that we pay these, um, engineers a lot of money and you'd think they could at least get it a little closer instead of having so many changes throughout the way. Kind of like think ahead outside the box, like.
Yeah.
Especially this wall here, when you're designing it, don't you know there's a gap there and you know what the codes are? Why design it that way? So.
Yeah.
It's a little frustrating sometimes.
I think that's one that they probably, you know, they should have caught. The others, you know, we, um, Stan did put a contingency in, I believe it was 10 or 15%. So there was some padding already in there. Um, so, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see where it comes out. I think we're going to be close. We're, we're, we're watching the dollars the best that we can and, um, there was some, you know, there were some numbers for relocation and some numbers for, um, contract management and stuff like that that I think are going to be lower than anticipated, so I'm hoping that we'll be okay.
Okay.
But I will let you know, I'll give you some, some solid numbers at the next meeting.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the change order number three and invoice number four for payment?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
It's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys. Okay.
Since I'm the clerk of the works, I'll abstain from voting on that.
Ah. Um, facility use agreement. There was one in here you saw from the Rutland Raff further 10K, which is a virtual 10K kind of, so to speak.
Virtual 10K, okay.
In other words, you're running, but it's not.
With everybody.
That's my type of race.
Exactly, you run at your own pace.
Well, I wondered at first when I saw the dates, I'm like, that's quite a long race.
Right, yeah.
Running for a whole week. So, is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement?
Do we have the insurance?
It's, yes, it's, it's on its way. I know they'll get it to me. It's on its way.
What facility are they using?
The carriage trail.
They're considering the carriage trail a facility.
We don't even have the carriage trail.
We, we don't have permission to give, uh, use of the carriage trail.
Right.
Well, it's, it's in the town, so it's our property. So I think they want, just to make sure they're covered running through our town.
I think it's the library's property.
They're actually asking for permission from you for your part. They ask permission to ask for ours.
Okay.
You're not, you don't, you have no authority to give permission for anyone else, but you do own a small portion at the beginning and they also started the rink.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for clearing that up.
And if they, I can get the insurance for you if you, if Brittany doesn't get it to you, so.
Okay, okay, great.
See, I for, I, I forgot for a moment we had an insider.
Yeah. Little insider.
Nudge from the inside.
My room is getting so dark, I can't even see my papers anymore.
Oh, we're getting there.
Um.
Are we giving permission to use the rink facilities?
No.
I think it's outside, just like.
It's the actual rink, right? Like, not the.
Right, the grounds, like.
Probably the water fountain and what have you.
I don't think they're going in.
No, it's just the starting, they're not going in.
Yeah, they're, they're not even going to have this really, anybody there to do anything. It's just people run at their own.
Right.
And where are these, can you tell me these dates? I don't want to scroll too much because I'll lose my.
It's October.
10th through the 17th.
Yep.
Okay.
8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for doing that.
Okay, the next, uh, facility use agreement again is with Furnace Brook, the church, to extend their service through September, September 6th, the 13th, the 20th and 27th.
Greg, you were at the rec meeting the other night. You said at the rink, was there any problems brought up?
Not at all, not at all, not with this at all. Um, we have another, uh, and it, a, a potentially another, facility use agreement that might come up that, that people are, well, we could talk about it later, but no, I'm sorry, Tom. No, everything's going fine. Um, they're, they're having no issues whatsoever with cleaning before and after and any of the actual use of the facility at all. I think the majority of it, actually the majority of what the, the church is using is outside anyway. They just go inside to use the bathrooms, I think.
For now, until it gets too cold.
Yeah, but they're, I, they're looking very diligently for a, a full-time home, I think.
Motion to approve?
Can I also ask that they give us a new certificate of insurance? Because this one's not accurate.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'll say it, I'll say it.
Huh?
What I got says policy expires August 1st of 2021.
Um, right, but down below in the description, their dates are June 28th through August 16th.
I got you, I got you.
The new dates in there.
Yep, all right.
All right, I'm sorry, there was a motion to approve with the changes in the certificate of insurance on both, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we've talked about the car. Beaver Pond Shared Use Plan.
So you didn't, you didn't make a motion for the race. Is that just by consensus?
Oh, I thought there, maybe I didn't. All right, and then I just probably combined them just now, which I shouldn't have, but. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the one for the race?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm going to step off for just a second because I got to get a charger for my phone, a little bit of docs.
Okay, all right. So Beaver Pond Shared Use Path.
So in move, in moving forward with this project and the, uh, the grants and everything, um, part of the requirement for the, the grant is that there is a second public meeting that needs to be done. Uh, that is actually scheduled, that, that is on our website, but that has actually been scheduled for this Thursday at 6:30. Um, it's either via Zoom or I'm actually going to have a projector. And thank you Lisa for the projector, by the way. Uh, I'm going to have a projector and, um, some seats outside here at my office so people could come take a look at the presentation from the engineer. But before they can do that, we have to, the select board has to approve the, um, the plans, um, as they are now. Now, there, there's still some changes that are going to be made, but just the requirement, sort of one of the hoops we have to jump through is that the select board has to approve the plan so that whenever they're presenting them to the public, they are an approved set of plans. So I've given you all the plans with the, uh, uh, the original design here. Like I said, these are, are probably about 60 to 70% complete. There have been some comments from the state that have been addressed. Um, so they're really close to the finished product, but they definitely, you know, can change if there's some public comments and things like that. But, um, what I need from you is just to, to give me a, an approval on these, if you're okay with them, so that we can have the meeting on Thursday.
Is there a motion to approve just the plans, correct?
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, the Tri-Town Bike Loop Scoping Study.
So in staying with the bicycle theme, um, I met with town managers from Pittsford and West Rutland last week. to discuss the potential for a uh three-town uh tri-town bike loop. I think this was something Stan had started and was a very big advocate for this. But essentially, this this would start and make a big loop between the three towns. It would go up and around and then down uh somewhere through Proctor. Uh, we don't know yet where, but uh what the discussion was about with uh with the Regional Planning Commission was to put together a scoping study and to just kind of see how this would work and see where it would go, how much it would cost, if it was feasible to even do. Uh, our cost on this, I believe, is going to be uh it's it's 20%, so it's it's a $2,000 expense at this point. Um, each town, each town's going to contribute $2,000 to get the the scoping study started. And then from there, we'll we'll kind of see where it goes. So what I need from you is is um to decide whether or not you're willing to um spend the $2,000 to share in the cost of the the tri-town bike loop scoping study.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tom.
I think this is a great idea and, you know, it's tying us in with West Rutland and Pittsburgh even more, which is a good thing in my opinion.
And I'm going to lean on the other end of the spectrum and say, I think it's a great idea, but I think our budget right now with the way everything is going on, that $2,000 doesn't seem like a lot. But I think it's not something that is necessary that we really need to focus on spending money on at this time because we don't know where we're going to end up by year end. That's just my two cents. If we get $2,000 here and $2,000 there for all these things, eventually our budget's going to be way over. Anybody else?
Greg, what was the feeling from West Rutland and Pittsburgh?
Uh, they're all in, I think. At least the town managers were all in.
I again, I think this is a good idea. We have a good group of people on our bike committee, pet committee. And I think this is money well spent. The carriage trail certainly gets a lot of use here, bringing people into Proctor and if we could continue it and do more, I I think it will help us in the long run.
Bruce or Ben? Harry?
Well, the you uh, how about we wait and see how the other towns maybe uh at the at our next meeting or the first meeting in October, see how the other towns have had a chance to discuss this and see whether they're thinking along the same lines.
But applications due September 30th.
Oh. Well.
There is a problem.
We could do it the 28th then.
I kind of lean to not spend the money while I think it's great. I'm just not really sure that that's in our budget right now. And I kind of have some reluctance about the biker thing, especially since they do not adhere to the traffic laws already. So I kind of I mean, not that that's, it has a lot to do with it, but it doesn't. But I really don't know is we have $2,000 to currently spend on this when we just okay $2,000 more on the town hall.
I prefer to hold off on this. I it's just not something I think I'm ready to pull the trigger on. And Tom, I get it. I I totally do, but I just, I don't know if this is the time.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm all for a bike path and having people, you know, have it, enjoy it. I I'd like to see our bike trail finished first and then.
Yeah.
And like I said, I know it's not a lot, but this is just for a study. It's not even to you know. So is there consensus that we don't want to approve this right now? And see what happens on their end?
Yeah, can we look at our budget report a little closer, maybe uh at the on the 28th? And see whether the other towns are you know, the town boards are behind it too.
Right, and are they asking for $6,000 for this scoping study?
It's.
Are they just asking for 2,000 from our town because it's in our town?
Right, so the the grant is $30,000 and 3% of the or 20% of that is 6,000. So we would split that between the three towns. That's a $2,000 expense for the scoping study.
Okay.
Let's wait and see how the other towns feel. And discuss it again.
Okay. All right. You don't need a motion for that, do you? We just.
Nope, nope, I got you.
Thanks. Okay, um, 2020, 2021 dog tag fees.
So uh Celia came to me and said, what are we going to do about the dog tags that haven't been that that people haven't gotten? Um, because with the COVID and all that, I think, you know, of course, there were some things that didn't get done and and things that were not um sort of tracked like they should have or 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 chased as much as they should have been. So the question is, what do we do with not only the people? So so the dog tags, I believe, are good until the end of the year. Am I am I right? I think the dog tags are good to the end of the year. So we have a significant amount of people who have not paid for their dog tags for the year we're in right now. Um, and a lot of that is because of the COVID. Um, we also have quite a few people who have paid for their dog tags for this year. So the question is, what would the select board like us to do for the next few months till the till the next year's up and until the next year's here, so we can start this all over and and actually, I assume do this like we normally would and just ask everybody to get dog tag, get the tags. What do we do in the meantime? Do we would the select board like us to go after the people who have not gotten tags for their dogs? Um, so that they're they're basically paying for tags for the next three months and then they, you know, they're no longer valid, then they have to do it again? How would you like me to to move forward?
I think people need to pay for the dog tag. It it's your responsibility. And they've had ample enough time to do that because we gave them an extra month. I don't think it's fair to waive their fees when we've already made other people have already paid. So I think we ask them to pay for their dog registration.
They weren't, they didn't get the tags, right?
No.
Right, right. So there are a lot of dogs.
So they're not registered.
Exactly.
Do you have a number? Do you happen to have a number?
I don't. She didn't give me, she didn't give me a number. She didn't.
I mean, I'm wondering how big a, you know, if it's like 20% of the dog owners, 50% of the dog owners.
I don't have anything for you.
Because they're due in April, I believe, aren't they?
Yeah, that sounds right. It seems like there's always a a like in March or some sort of a clinic in April, yeah, yeah.
Could you get us some numbers for next?
Yeah, I can get you more information on this.
I think we should go and ask people to register their dogs.
Exactly.
Absolutely. That's in the ordinance. That's the ordinance. That's what we're holding people to. And and that's what we're going to ask the sheriff too, when the sheriff gets sent. They absolutely need to pay for their dog. It's called responsibility. I mean, the same thing happens with your car registration. The state doesn't say, oh, COVID happened, so we're giving you the rest of the year off. I I mean, it, they owe the money.
Because it's been almost, what, like five months?
Yeah.
I say we try to collect the dog registrations.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
Who are we going to have do that?
Well, it's up to the town, town clerk, the ones who ex- collect them in the first place.
Yeah, well, yeah, it'll probably be the assistant town clerk or something. Well.
Right.
We'll just look at the records and start making phone calls.
Yeah, or even sending, you know, like a let, you know, I'm just eager to make a phone call, probably.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And you get a better response, I think.
Right.
Second motion? Just for clarification.
Is there a motion to go after the dog fees?
I make a motion to go after dog registrations and have that taken care of, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, review of the firearm ordinance. Um, regarding BB guns.
The ordinance is in your packet as well as an email. Um. So uh, I don't know if you all know the story, but this sort of stems partially from uh I received a phone call from a citizen and she asked if a BB gun is considered a firearm. And looking at the ordinance, I said, no, it is not because the the ordinance says it has to shoot something out via an explosion. So that was a conversation. And then from there, this person, I guess, got on Facebook or something and asked if she could get a BB gun, borrow a BB gun and start shooting cats or something. So um so there 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 has been uh some discussion about whether we need to possibly look at the uh the ordinance and add some additional language for BB guns or things like that. So I I added um a a there is a definition actually in that email that I gave you uh from Lisa. I don't know where this came from, but um it's sort of a, you know, a definition of what an air rifle and sort of what a BB gun is. So the ta- the floor is open. If anyone wants to talk about, you know, is this something you want to add to the um the ordinance or or how do we need to kind of move forward with this? Just for the record, I never told her she could catch. I just want that out there. Um, never did. Just said that you can have a, because it's not an explosive, it's compressed air and, you know, honestly, a a compressed air, a lot of things use compressed air, you know, nail guns and things like that use compressed air. So uh but via the ordinance or by the ordinance, it is not, a BB gun is not any a firearm.
Um, I think just for our own sake and protection, that um it needs to be added to the ordinance on BB guns on because they can kill things. They can do harm.
And I and I disagree. I I disagree. It's not the same. That means that because I think I was reading in the ordinance that they would only be able to fire that at certain locations. Doesn't it have like this whole list?
Well, there there used to be probably locations in town where you were like able to fire a a firearm, but I don't know that there are anymore in town.
But there's no firing.
The going a little, going a little crazy. We could be uh amending this ordinance for every little thing that comes along. I think it's.
Well, I'll just tell you now, they're illegal in the city of Rutland. You can't fire anything in the city of Rutland. So um, you know, I mean, and I'm not saying, you know, people out there were shooting BB guns, but I'm just saying if someone did fire a BB gun at an animal or a person, they could bring harm. So it it there's nothing, I don't see any hurt in just putting it into the ordinance. Lisa?
So I guess when you uh approved the firearm ordinance and we spoke about this at Great Link, um, the primary concern was any shooting within town. And I think that BB guns can cause harm. And I think because we are such a compact village that someone could be shooting from another yard and shoot into your yard. And I I I don't think that's the intent. Um, I also think that we have lots of properties that um abut back to other properties. And are we saying that's okay, shooting like that? I I guess it's it's really concerning that um we think that shooting within the town is okay. And we don't see um any issue with that, particularly since we are such a com- compact village.
So since I live where I live, do you do you uh understand how much shooting already goes on in this town? It's all the time.
I I do. I hear it on a regular basis. But I certainly don't think you'd be very um pleased if people in my neighborhood were shooting in their backyards towards the pool. I think there would probably be some concern, particularly by the five of you. I think that if you live on Park Street and your property abuts those that live on South Street and someone shooting in the backyard, that that would be concerning. Um, and BB guns can fire. Listen, I grew up around guns. I I I don't have an issue with guns, but I think there has to be a level of common sense. And when you look at the way our our housing is set up, I think that it is not unreasonable to think that shooting in the backyard is not a good idea.
We we uh, this is way above and beyond uh BB guns. You're all on BB guns. You know. What 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 we have one complaint on this and it's the first time I ever heard of a complaint since I've been on the board.
Right.
You know, the the we we're we're stepping on people's rights here. I I disagree with this totally.
When I was in high school, there was a kid, well, actually, I was in high school, I was in grammar school, I'm walking across the marble bridge and one of the kids in Proctor had a BB gun. He was shooting at us on the way home from school. Nothing ever came of it, but those are different times. But I'm just saying, I've had a cat that was killed by a BB gun. Because a kid next door was just a little crazy with his gun, wanted to fire it off.
Well, go and talk to your neighbor then. You know, it's just.
Well, it wasn't here, it was in another town.
Oh, okay. I'll talk to your neighbors. If you got a problem with them. We don't need to ordinance everything.
No.
Great. I hope we keep that in mind when we're looking at other ordinances.
We always do.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm not in favor of it.
Ben?
Sorry, I my phone just fell. I I could see both sides of this. I understand the concern and specifically I guess in in my head, there's there's different kinds of BB guns. This is where I think we get into a a weird area, you know? What exactly is a projectile? What exactly is a firearm? I think if we're going to make a decision on this, we need to do something more than just this five-minute discussion.
Well, here's the other, here's another point, case in point. Who is enforcing this? If it were to become part of the ordinance, who is enforcing it? So again, instead of having a conversation or being a parent, somebody's going to call the sheriff. The sheriff may or may not come. And then we have another issue. And the sheriff's just going to say, don't do that anymore. But who's going to enforce this? And we don't even enforce the shooting that goes on up the road from me.
But I, the only and the only other thing I want to throw out is I've just, I've been watching as we've been having this discussion. Charlotte's been throwing things out here like what about
Right.
different kinds of of things. And I guess my point is on this one. Regardless of which way we decide to move on this, I think we have to take a step back and look and 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 I'm the last one to want to put off stuff and put off stuff and put off stuff. At the same time, we we have, I mean, this is one of those things that we have to be very clear about. So what is a BB gun? Is it an air soft gun? Is it a CO2 gun? Is it a paintball gun? It, you know, there's all of a sudden there becomes more and more things and it could become a slippery slope. So I'm just saying, we we need to all be on the same page on this and we need to all be very confident on this. That's that's just my two cents.
Agreed.
So I guess my question would be raised is just because of this situation that came up that hopefully won't come up again. But if it does and this person does get a BB gun and shoots at the neighbor's cats, is it just up to the neighbor then to go over and say, hey?
Well, there's already laws against animal cruelty.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, I mean, that, that law's already on the books. So, I, I mean, if that's the real concern, then we're, that's it. We don't need to worry about it. Whether they're throwing a rocket at an animal or shooting a BB gun, they can't do it. So, I, I think that's, problem is solved. I think the issue becomes, are we going to, to pass an ordinance on BB guns? Which, if we've decided to do that, that's fine. I just think we need to spend a little more time discussion and a little more time of research before we just go through and start amending that ordinance.
Well, I mean, I think it's as easy as adding a, the part to where discharging shall mean to shoot or fire a firearm. If you put an add in there and an air gun, you know, specifically a BB gun, within town limits. I mean, you go hunting in the woods with BB guns all the time, you know, it's, that's fine. I'm just saying, like in residential areas, most places don't allow it.
So where does it end? Cause then it's gonna be water guns, and then it's paint guns, and then it's bow and arrows, and then it's, I, I mean, where does it end? I think we're just opening a can of worms. I think we should be more diligent about it. Than just adding BB gun.
Yeah. You, you're gonna outlaw, you brought up a good thing, you know? Bowls and arrows, you know? You know? Gotta give people some little common sense.
Unfortunately, these people don't have common sense.
Well.
I, I think the people at Proctor have common sense.
I'm not talking about everybody in town, I'm talking about specific people.
Yes.
And, and guess what? Those specific people aren't gonna abide by your ordinance anyways.
But we can't, we can't say that that's a reason not to pass an ordinance. At, at that point, I'm gonna disagree. We can't say that if, if people aren't gonna follow it, that we don't pass it. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, I understand that, yes, but.
Okay, so is there a motion to either just not, to leave the ordinance as is and not revise it?
So moved.
So a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those not, Carrie?
I think that before I can vote on this, I think it needs a little more research. I don't wanna vote yes or no and then have it come back, but. I just.
I'm saying, I don't think we have to make a decision tonight.
Correct. I don't think we need to make a decision tonight either. I think I just need to, I need to go for myself, go look at what other towns are saying and go look at what that verbiage is and, and do a little bit more research and then have an understanding of who's enforcing it.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get the sheriff's department to enforce a BB gun ordinance. I don't believe it.
Well, let me, uh, let me take my motion back and we'll discuss this in the future.
Okay, I would like to do some research, get some other ordinances and put it on the next agenda and we make a decision at that meeting whether we're gonna change the ordinance or not because we have had two other ordinances hanging up there forever and we never, ever resolved them and get them approved. And so we just have ordinances always pending. So, this seems like an easy one. It's just one item we need to make a look at, you know, take a look at and see what, um, our feelings are more concretely in the next meeting.
Yep. And the dog ordinance will be to you before the next meeting.
Okay, cause that one's gonna be, I think, on the next agenda.
So, so you, are you directing me to do some more research on this? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm saying we can do, I'll, I'm happy to do some research.
No, I can do it. I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm the one you, you know, I don't have a problem doing it. I just wanna.
I don't know, everyone seemed like they wanted to too, so I didn't know if.
I didn't want to step on any of those toes.
Yeah.
Nope, you can, you can do that too and we can all have, at least have some more educated discussion regarding this before we change anything.
And we can share it before the next meeting, so we actually, that night, don't have to review and look at everything.
But what I'll do is just look at other towns around the state and just see what they have on their books.
Okay.
Towns of comparable size, I hope.
Yes.
Correct.
All right. Sheriff Department report. Any questions or comments on that?
There's a, there's a ticket on here.
No.
Six hundred and forty, uh, six hundred and fifty-four dollars for something.
Yeah.
Gross.
Steve? Oh, that's for five, isn't it?
I don't know, I can't see it. I looked through this before and I can't.
Five tickets.
Five tickets?
Five fines, six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay.
Price beat.
Yep. Two warnings issued and five fines.
We're back in the money.
Get two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
That helps, Bruce.
So, I, I just wanna point out that we know about the happenings on the bridge. And I'm just kind of looking to see, was the sheriff anywhere in that time? But this cuts off at nine-ten. And at nine-ten, it, it's a Thursday. I guess the next meeting I'll be looking to see if the sheriff was here. Nine-ten was during the day. Nine-nine was, ended.
So.
Two-thirty.
I left a message with the chief about if, if anybody had, you know, been involved with this. John, were you, John is here with me. Um, have you heard anything from the sheriff? Okay, so, I don't believe, but we'll look at the, well, we'll look at the reports and see if they were there, but I don't believe that they were around for this.
Well, and, and that, I guess, is, is my point, that how many days did it go where there was no police coverage? Cause the last time they were in town was nine-ten during the day for three hours.
When did it, well, it hit Facebook, I'm sure, first. I'm not sure when that was, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it hit Facebook on a Friday.
It was a Saturday, I believe that it hit Facebook.
Saturday? Okay.
Yes. Cause we were at Beaver Pond.
So there's your window, at least somewhat.
Right, so the last day that the sheriff was here was nine-ten during the day. So I want us to kind of be diligent about looking at his report the next meeting to see when, from nine-ten, when was the next time he was in town?
Right. Okay, well, I will pick it up from that date and, and get you the next report at the next meeting.
I did see him here, uh, on that Sunday, but.
What'd you say, Bruce?
I did see him on, uh, let's see, when, when was the bridge thing, uh?
So the Sunday's the thirteenth. So I wanna know if he was here anytime between the tenth and the thirteenth.
I believe he was here. I, I saw him on the thirteenth in town.
It wasn't this, it wasn't the thirteenth, it wasn't this Sunday?
Oh, no, I mean, whoa, I'm talking, uh, the sixth.
Right.
Yeah. He was here on the sixth, I saw him.
All right, let's.
So, anything else you want to say? Carrie? Bruce?
So the sixth?
The, the sixth isn't when it happened though. We think it happened somewhere between the tenth and the twelfth.
Oh.
Because John, yeah, that was.
The tenth.
Oh, no, you're right, Bruce. It happened somewhere between, you're right.
The third, the fourth.
Yeah, it was before.
You're right. So let's go back in this report.
Yeah, this would be the one before. Cause this only goes back to, yeah, it goes back, the third and the fourth.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a, okay, so the la, he was here on the second, um, and then he was here on the fifth.
And the fifth is a Saturday, so for three days, we had no police coverage.
Right. Yeah, he was here at five o'clock on the second and then back at whatever that is, four o'clock. I can't do that. Three o'clock on the fifth.
His total hours for the two week period were ninety plus hours, ninety and a quarter hours.
Yeah, it's, I actually did it just from the last date of our last meeting until this meeting, so it's probably more than just a two week period. Um, I can do, if you'd prefer, just to do a two week period, so it's, you know, but I, I, what I'm trying to do is cover every day so that we can see everything. And the August twenty-fourth is the date of our last meeting and then right before on Friday, when I put this packet together, that's what the eleventh was.
Understood. Yeah, thank you. I didn't, I didn't figure that.
Okay, is there anything else? Old or new business?
We have to go into the next session.
Eden Avenue.
That's right, sorry. Got the, you have the page.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Eden Avenue with the property.
So did everybody get a copy of the letter I sent?
Yes.
Well, okay. Uh, so this person has been given their thirty days notice, um, unfortunately, unfortunately, but I apologize. I looked at the ordinance and I, I didn't read it right, apparently, cause it, actually, this is all supposed to go through the select board. Um, but they've been given thirty days notice and they have not complied with the notice. So the ordinance states that the select board can now choose to, um, well, sort of choose the next step. And what it says is that typically we would abate the issue, which means you would hire somebody to go in and, and do it themselves and we would bill the, the owner of the property, um, for whatever the cost is.
I don't know, since we didn't follow the ordinance and the proper procedure, if the thirty days qualifies. You know, if, if we can hold them to that. Sorry, don't mean to make a big deal out of it, but, you know, there is an ordinance basically saying we decide whether there was an issue and then we say, yep, we'll send a letter. And we didn't do that. So this is the first I've heard of it. I haven't even heard about this issue at all.
Right.
So, I don't know how everybody else feels. Is, I assume the homeowner is in the home?
Yes. Yeah, I went by today and there was a car in the parking, in the, in the driveway.
Is this property that was foreclosed on? No? Okay.
So.
Well, maybe. It might be in foreclosure now, but there's no foreclosed houses on our street right now.
And there's, there's somebody living there though, right?
Yes. Yes, which I'm not sure that person got said letter.
Right, but it's really the owner that we would have sent it to, cause it's their responsibility.
Right. And I don't think that person.
Is that the owner anymore?
That person doesn't even open the mailbox.
Gotcha.
The post office usually has to tell them to open the mailbox.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Well, um, then if, if, if you would prefer, we can, you guys can make a. But I'd have to put it on the next agenda and we can bring it back. Um, and, and then at that meeting, you would have to just take a look at the situation and decide, um, if you wanna give this person however many days. It's fairly open in the ordinance. It doesn't say, it says up to thirty days. So it can be a lot less than that, since they've already been notified, sort of.
Was it sent certified or no?
No, it's not required to be sent certified, but we could, we, we, we can.
You know, to get proof that they actually.
Right, right, and you know.
Their mailbox, if they.
Yeah, I like to do that, but a lot of times, you know, that's six, seven dollars each time we do it, so it can get costly, but, um, what we can do is bring it back and have the select board take a look at it. And if you choose to pursue this as a violation, you can set the terms as far as how long they're given. Um, and.
I haven't been by the property, but I'm, you know, I'm all for if someone's property is not maintained and taken care of, then by all means, you know, we do what we, what we should make them.
It's bad. It, like, almost waist-high.
Yeah, it's, it's at least a foot, foot and a half long. Yeah.
In some places, even there.
Yeah, there's some weeds that are pretty tall as well.
Okay. It's bad.
So.
Can we do a two-pronged thing? Can you maybe find out who the property owner is and call them and just see if we give that, take care of that way? But if not, move forward with the letter and follow the ordinance?
Yeah, I can do that. I can call them and say, you know, if, if this isn't taken care of by the, the twenty-eighth, there will be a violation. Point. We could do something like that. And then you can set that timeframe to get it, um, fixed up at something that's shorter than thirty days, if you feel like it. And we can try to expedite this.
To be shorter than thirty days because it's gonna be there until spring if we wait thirty days.
Okay, so is there a motion, Ben? You wanna make a motion to have him?
Yeah, so I, I moved to have Greg reach out to the property owner, but, uh, verbally and then also to move forward with the letter, uh, to follow the, the letter of the ordinance as well.
Okay.
I'll do that tomorrow and, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Is there a second? All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanna say, Charlotte is sending something about the car. And Charlotte, we talked about the car. I think you came on after the car.
Yes.
So the car's been discussed and we're moving forward with that.
Correct. Okay. All right, so on your agenda, you will see a executive session. Put some lights on here so I can see. Um, so, um, is there a motion to go into the executive session to consider the Simon's Operation Service Proposal? And basically, um, this is because, given the premature general public knowledge of the matter, it would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we will go into executive session.
Charlotte.